I guess we're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:32. Recording members present.
Boulder.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
All right, our second item is to administer the oath of office to the new board member, Shan Wilson, seat number one.
I, Shan Wilson, hereby declare under oath that I will faithfully perform the duties of school board member and the freedom of the schools to the best of my ability, and that I will faithfully discharge all the duties pertaining to set office and obey the Constitution and laws of the United States and Oklahoma.
As point of explanation for school board, following the certification of a board election, which you'll hold a board election on Tuesday, and the board election will be certified by Friday, at the first regular or special meeting of the school board, the new board member has to be seated at that board meeting. And because our special meeting here is the first one, the school board member has to be seated at that board meeting. And Mr. Wilson takes his oath of office, and the board has to be reconstituted at that meeting. So that's the reason by statute that the board has to take care of the first. They have to take care of item number two, which is administering the oath of office, and now they'll have to reconstitute the board. So just a little bit of housekeeping right here before we get started.
All right, well, item number three is the board to consider and possible vote to reorganize the board president, vice president, and board clerk. Is there anybody?
I'd like to motion to place Shan as president.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. I guess we'll be committed to vote on that then, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Concha, did you second? No. Okay, I didn't hear.
Reed.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Boulder.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
All right, the second is the vice president and clerk, and I guess I'd make a motion that Cindy Reed be vice president and that Concha stay clerk if everybody's okay with that.
You already got your stamp. I'm sorry. That was our second.
Yep.
Yes.
Herrera.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Boulder.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Okay, done with that. Item number four is a board to review and possibly solicit public input with the objective of establishing a priorities list with consideration towards a general bond election for Freedom Public School District for possible building construction and upgrades. Would you like to? I guess you start, and we'll go from there. If anybody's got any more input, we'll go from there.
All right. As we led into the previous bond election that was unsuccessful, the board worked on that for right of a year. And when the board began, they started with a priorities list, and the list was extensive. And they went out and solicited from the architect a construction price list. They worked off that construction price list down to what the board felt like was a manageable amount on the bond to present to the voting public. Where we're at tonight, where we're starting, is basically stage one. The school district still has its needs, and the process is beginning from ground zero. We're looking, or the board is looking, to start the process all over, looking to build priorities lists. And what they're doing is asking for public input and putting together a long-range priorities list, looking at projects to improve the facilities here at school. And they're soliciting public input. And that's what we're here for. I know the individual board members have priorities. We all have priorities. But they're soliciting from you, the voting public, what you would think would be, as far as a construction standpoint, would be a priority. You need to understand, as we, as the board puts together this priorities list, ranks this priorities list, as we work through the next months, this would go to an architect, a projected cost would come back in from an architect, and due to cost considerations, you know, items may be pared and moved from an immediate need to a future need. And that's just long-term planning, and that's how these projects are done. So with that, we're back to the board, and they're requesting your input. So no one be afraid to speak yet?
No, we're, there's still a lot of, I mean, there's, there's definitely problems. We know we need a roof fixed. We know we need a new gym floor. You know, heating and air conditioning issues that we all, you know, everybody kind of knows about, but we have roofs leaking in other places. And, you know, we're trying to get this thing back together and get it going as fast as we can because we need this, this building needs to be kept up and fixed up and fix it as a whole and get, I think the necessities first. You know, we kind of, you know, maybe we reached a little bit too far on the first one, and I still think a lot of those projects on that first bond need to be done. But, you know, I kind of, I've been, I've fiddled around for the last two or three weeks, and I kind of got it, just from talking to people and going back through my notes from the other, from the other board meetings, you know, things that we talked about on and on. And I kind of made a list and put it together, and these are just some of the things that I think, and I got some.
You guys want one of these for activities, so you can look at them and see what you all think? And, you know, this is, most of all this stuff, we have talked about in the past, in the, you know, over the last, took one more. I'll share one then, because I was gonna give it to one of you guys there. On there, a lot of this stuff is on here.
And I guess you gotta pass these around, and you kind of want to look at them. And that's just, that's from talking to everybody, talking to the new board member, talking to the old ones, talking to people in the, you know, out in public and trying to figure out what we need to do to get this thing on tax. You know, I just think it's, you know, there's several things on here, you know, the new roof, we all know we need that. But I think there's, there's several different ways we can do at it, and I just think that, you know, that's, for me, the number one priority is all these roofs on these buildings need repair, all of them. And we gotta get that on go, or we're gonna have bigger problems. We're gonna have floors run, computers run, books run, and, you know, we've already got a gym floor run. There's, you know, the bathrooms, we know we need to upgrade those. We need to get them where they're ADA compliant for handicaps and things like that, and, you know, there's, I just, you know, those are kind of my, you know, the, those are my priorities first, is that all the roofs, the windows and the heating and air, and the gym floor and the bathrooms. I mean, those are the first things I think ought to be done, and that would get us a good start on what we can do in another three years from now or whatever. And there may be other things on here we can do. I'm just asking what everybody else thinks, you know, it's.
Shane, could you move the mic down a little closer? There's some of us dinosaurs in here that don't hear like we do.
I don't know if there's a mic. Maybe I'm gonna have to start hollering, I guess.
Just start hollering then, set your steps.
Yeah. Did you not hear nothing I said? Or just about every other word?
Yeah. I can hear you. Rick, make some move forward.
Well, it's, I mean.
We'll get, we'll get him backed up in just a second.
As long as I don't have to hear my own voice, as long as I don't have to hear myself through most time, I'm all right. Yeah, you don't need to show me a recording of it, because I can't stand to hear myself.
Mr. President. I see nothing on the old gym. Is it not included?
Well, no, the Ag Building, when I say all the roofs on the buildings, I'm including that with that. I am including, if you turn over on the back, there's some stuff on the back of the two for the Ag Building. You know, I guess I didn't say that, that was.
Are you still projecting on the old Ag Building, the old gym, a quarter of a million dollars into that building?
Well, I mean, I don't know. It's, you know, that was an estimated cost. I think we need to get them back up here and have them look at it again, make sure that we've got a good, that is, that is a capable building, or it is a usable building. You know, I don't know, maybe that's something that everybody, we want to start different from that.
Would it be feasible to build a new building behind, smaller, with a classroom, two restrooms, and smaller, you know?
You know, maybe.
Old building?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm for all that stuff. I just, you're trying to get the necessities going first, you know?
I played in that thing, and I know what it's like. I helped supervise carrying out the old bleachers.
Right.
Blocks where the restrooms were. I know why the ceiling tiles are bad, because we had a Bo-Act instructor at that time that was short of welding rods.
Right.
And there was a good reason why.
Yeah.
They were in the ceiling.
Yeah.
Mr. Boulder, I think you remember that. You were in school. They couldn't find screwdrivers, they were in the ceiling.
Well, maybe when we start tearing it down, we'll find some of that stuff.
I agree that the entire roof from the gym this way, as a naked eye, you can see the curve of the school, the old, older part is in dire need of recoating.
Yeah, absolutely.
The roof in the gym, if you go to a game, you'll see the stains in the ceiling.
Yep.
And you guys tried to stop part of that. You all got up there and swept water off, and you coated where you thought you needed to.
Hey, by all means, was that a fix? That was, that was just a.
Temporary fix, and it's been bad since 1969.
Yeah.
When it was built. Now, the whole thing is in very bad shape. The school, basically, is falling apart.
Yeah, and it's gonna get worse if we don't do something about it.
You're not gonna have a roof, period.
Yep. I agree, I mean, I agree with that.
I think, just personally, we need to address the roof situation, it's number one priority, get it taken care of in a manner of, I mean, it's urgent.
Yep.
We've got the wet season probably, hopefully it is wet.
Yeah.
Coming up, summer months, and then we go into the fall, maybe we haven't even started on it. So.
Yeah, I mean.
It's not gonna get fixed by itself.
No, absolutely not. And we just are, I mean, I know for my deal, I, you know, there's been probably not great communication all the way around on all of us, on certain things, you know, some of us better than others, and we're trying to get that back where we know what's going on, and we can get this building put back together. Because I don't think there's one of us up here that does not want this to be the best building in.
Well, also, when you look at the cost of redoing the services on the school gym and the school itself, I don't think we'd be looking way ahead and spending money just ridiculously on other areas. I mean, don't be inscribed, fix what we got problems with, and then maybe down the road you do something else.
Right. Hey, I'm in agreeance with that. I, you know, I don't know what's the right way to go about that, but.
We cannot have a district tournament here. Why? Because we don't have any handicap accessible restrooms. The night we played Bellings here, they had a fan come in a wheelchair. Very limited space over in that far corner for them to sit.
Yep.
And not get run over by a loose basketball or a player.
Well, that's something, I mean, that, you know, that we can look into doing. I mean, I, I'm all for those things, you know, it's just, can we fix the necessities first and have that on the list for the next time? Or is that a necessity this time? Do we have to have that this time? You know, we've talked, you know, the last, where's one of them old sheets at? You know, the gym, when we, we're talking about the gym the last time, you know, we're, we're talking about replacing seats then, you know, on that list I put down on there that, you know, I, I don't know how we can replace those seats, there's several different ways. I mean, I thought about taking all the seats, taking the front row off and fixing what we got right there's it, and making a rent, you know? Hey, that's good for this time, that'll have all our seats fixed up. In five years when we want to run a bond again, hey, there's our, let's put the seats in there this time. Let's, let's do that, you know? I don't, you know, I don't, well, there's a ton of things on here, you know, you can go through a thousand ones, but at this point in time, you know, I think it's, you know, and everybody knows the way our, the old companies and our tax dollars are gonna quit coming in, and I know a bond pays for itself separately, but I even went back and looked on that, oh, that evaluation sheet that, that they gave us, and in like '04 or '05, you know, it went from being $12 million to, whack, it dropped down to, you know, to $6 million, and then it's gradually climbed back up to then. And I can't remember the exact year, I just read that earlier, you know, how it was up, and then it dropped, and then it came back up. Well, all that has to do with how we get our money for a bond. I don't know all the ins and outs of it, but, you know, that's something that's definitely things that I think about, because it's, you know, we can't afford to fix all of it out of our building fund all the time. You know, this is, like, the roofs on, on that gym, like you said, it's been a problem since 1969, and guess what? It's two ahead now. It's gonna get fixed, or it's gonna fall in. And, you know, it's how are we gonna go about fixing this? You know, that's, that's kind of where we're at, you know? And we're not the only ones that's dealt with it, we're just the ones that's happy to deal with it now. And we gotta get, we gotta do something, or.
So what would be the increase to do the, all of the roof? I mean, I thought we had trouble getting the last bond issue to pass because people thought we were spending too much money.
When?
And how, how can we, I mean, are we gonna be able to get it to go?
Well, maybe, but I, I think a lot of people's gripped at it, and it was, you know, how can you spend $819,000 in one place when you know you've got a leak in the library also? You're gonna fix that roof, but you're gonna let that one go for five years, or two years or whatever. I think that was a lot of people, you know what I'm saying?
People knew about all of that, I didn't know about the one in the library.
Well, you know, there were a lot of people in it, and that's just, that, you know, I had people coming in at that, and.
I would've said, go ahead and do it to the library, too. I'm, I'm for that.
Yeah, this is something that's.
I'm afraid that we'll have a hard time if we do a lot of those big things, are we gonna have a hard time getting it to pass when we have that one?
You know, for me, once again, talking to the people about that, and people come in and, you know, I've said this to these guys a lot, and I'm probably, for the most part, and the one guy, you know exactly where I am 24 hours a day. And, you know, I had people come in and tell me those things. How can you, you know, it wasn't the dollar amount, it was the fact that you're gonna spend there and not back here. And why can't you do away with some of the, the retractable goals? The all-brand new seating, you know, some of that stuff is gonna take that back where you can afford it. You're not gonna spend any more money. You're just putting it in the right spot, you're fixing everything, and fixing necessities first, not all the, that's my opinion, you know? I'm not sure other people have other, but.
Shane, this is not the first bond issue that failed.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Strickland voted, tried to pass a Part A, Part B, or a combination of, I know that would've been around the first part of 2000.
Right.
And it was for a new Ag Building. Classrooms, that was part, I don't know if that was A or B. We were playing at Winoka, and he was running back and forth to Ross's office to get the results.
Right.
And he came back in.
Well, I don't even want to go back that far, you know, I, everything is close, was close, and even our bond election, it was that close, one way or the other. And I, you know, I believe if, if there's some things straightened up, you know, fixing more of the necessities, I don't think we'll have a problem passing this if it's, if we put this together in the right way with longer, with long-range plans, which we thought we did the first time, but I think it was just a miscalculation on our part, on putting that together like that, you know? Because there were, I mean, we knocked off $900,000 off the first one because we did take a brand-new Ag Building off of it and, and some other stuff. We did do that. And we just didn't put it all in the right spot. You know, I, you know, and when we put this back together.
What was the estimated cost on your new Ag facility?
I don't wanna tell you. It was, uh.
It's not on there.
Yeah, I got, I have one of those.
$969,000. $969,000?
Yeah.
But that's not a, that's, that's not for classroom and shop, that's for animal barns.
Yeah, animal barns, yeah, show ring, concessionary restroom, I mean, that was something we had argued long and hard about that, and I gotta tell you, I was, I was probably the one that fought the most against that, because I thought that that was a ridiculous price, you know?
What, what's your estimate on, on renovation of the existing Ag barn?
Well, as of the last time, it was somewhere, it was $200,000.
It's on the back page.
It's on the back page. It's $241,000, $241, $250,000.
Is it feasible to spend a quarter of a million dollars on that old building and still have what, I mean, I have no emotional ties to that building, it's an eyesore, in my opinion, or go for the Cadillac and build a new facility? Put the classroom in there, you don't need a professional show ring for the number of students you've got in the program, it's the biggest program in your school district, right?
Yep.
If you, if you remodel an old house, you still live in an old house?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. You know, that's something that, hey, if people are for that, I just want to get it in that.
I want to answer her question. Shoot. I'm, I'm gonna respond to your question, if that's okay, and understand that I've worked for the school, that's, that's my job, providing information. And in response to your question, you're asking, currently, I don't have those numbers. And what the board is starting the process of is to put together a priorities list, and once that list is put together, if a new, possibly a new agriculture building that would include a classroom and a shop is part of that list, then it would be my job to go to the architectural firm and come up with a projected cost. So we haven't gotten quite to the point of providing you a dollar amount to provide your answer for you. But I was sitting here running those numbers a minute ago, thinking, you know, projected square foot for the number of students we would have for classroom space and for usable space for office space and storage, and then for shop space, and come up with a building that would be 40 by 80, because you buy those barns in 20-foot sections, 40 by 60 is not adequate, so you go to 40 by 80, and then run up with a, you're looking at, because of the coating minimum requirements, because it's a public building, and because it's a public school, we can't get it constructed any less than $100 a square foot, and that's being extremely generous. So I'm telling you, for an Ag facility, for that cause, for that use, that's, that's what you're looking at minimum. Now, with that, you're looking at a brand-new building.
Yes.
A brand-new insulated red iron building. And also, don't get caught up in the fact that renovating this building is a show facility, or the new building would be a show facility. The shop is used to hold the local livestock show one day a year. And, you know, it, it does a good job in that capacity, and serves our students very well in that capacity. But the shop area at our Ag facilities is an extension of the learning classroom, and that's main, that is its main use, but.
In the early 1980s, we had an Aggie shop.
Well, now, I mean, I don't.
Lynn can attest to this, we taught welding, they put on welding seminars for the ranchers, farmers. These companies came out to show their wares in hopes of making some sales. We used to have, I don't know how many welders out there, and how many tools, they built stuff, kids were required to have a project, a shop project.
Well, absolutely, but that's kind of, I'm agreeing.
I know it's changed, but that building, I don't know how old it is. I graduated here in 1964, and it was terrible then. Restrooms were pathetic, the visiting team had to dress in a restroom. Our dressing rooms were terrible. And then it became the Bo-Act building with the little tiny Ag teacher area, classroom, then it moved back over here, then it moved back over there. There's a lot of things that we need to update, but the primary thing to me is, do we want to just coat that building's roof again? Because you can tell it's bad. We know this part's bad. You're gonna be like the city of Alba and have a leaky library, and you're gonna lose all your books. You can look at the front of the school, and you see how faded the curves are. I don't know when the last time, how many years it has been since it's been coated.
Yeah, seven years.
Seven years?
Yeah.
Well, it's showing.
It's about to run its, I mean, it's running its course.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that's something I want, you know, that, that we want to know.
Nothing is cheap.
Yeah, well.
And I, to me, I don't think. And I, to me, I don't think we need to be extravagant on a new school front. We need to be careful on what type of roof we put on. Is it gonna last? And we gotta get by. If we're not careful, we won't have the school to go to school in, because you're gonna have to bring your own buckets.
Yeah. That's what we're trying to do here. Well, I mean, that's, that, I mean, that's a good point. I'm glad you brought that up, you know, that's, you know, I, I wasn't opposed to redoing that one, but if, you know, I, I do agree. If we need to tear that ag building down and build a new one, then, hey, maybe that's what we need to do.
Well, when you're talking almost to a quarter of a million dollars-
Yep.
Which was in the last bond issue. Compared to the act, saving that towards a new facility back here, and getting rid of that door, you make it your bus storage, maybe increase the size of your pens, you gotta remember, that lean-to on the north side of that old gym was built through a grant, and a lot of parents, grandparents, uncles, and aunts put in the time to build that. The roof was donated from Donnie Ware and Girk's company. We can't just do away with that.
No.
Now, we're over it, we've outgrown it.
Yeah.
And that's, that, you just go back and look, see, I mean, animals on the quantity.
Yeah. Yeah. That's where we're at. I mean, uh-
Shane, you answered the question, had the numbers before on the old gym, for what it costs per square foot to build new buildings? And this old gym out over here where the ag facilities are now, it said, the architects say that the structure in that is fine, there's not anything wrong with it. And when you go to building new, as compared to fixing what you have right now, it's gonna save a lot of money, and that's a big building, there's a lot of square foot there.
Yeah. And you know.
But as far as being a nice one and all that, you know, it's been there forever, but it is structurally as good as any building anywhere. It just needs the roof fixed.
Yeah.
That's what my question was, is what exactly are you saying? Are you saying last that, yes, build a new one? Are you saying remodel what we have, considering it is a nice one, it's not the prettiest building on site, but-
According to what you proposed before in the bond issue, was going to be fixing the roof, a new ceiling, new restrooms. I don't know anything about insulation out there anymore.
What it was-
So, we can get on to the next subject.
Can we, can we run through that, what the last proposal was?
What we found the other day. But we don't know nothing about it.
How about you and I talk about that before we break that up? Okay. What was on the, what was on the renovation for the existing ag facility was to put a single ply TPO-type membrane roof on there, take the existing off, and basically take it down to wood substructure, and put two-inch ribs of foam and a TPO membrane roof on it with gutters and dowels spoused, and reinforce any roofing deck, and reinforce any presses that needed. The structural engineer told me, he, there was like one where there was water damage on it, it needed just a little bit. Uh, remove the ceilings, that's interior ceilings, take the entire shop, install welding, micro exhaust and micro fans, update the lighting fixture, replace 17 windows, infill five windows, renovate the south office of classrooms, renovate the north classroom, all new ceiling, gym walls, floors, and lighting in both of those. And someone mentioned the restroom to make those ADA compatible. They are large enough, as far as square footage, with it not being a gymnasium anymore, with it being a classroom space, you can go in and make those single-use, and install the correct fixtures in there to make both of those ADA compatible. You know, new walls, completely renovate them, and with the correct fixtures, do all the renovation, and the handles, and make them ADA compatible. However, it's $241,250 is projected. And that's, that's what the proposal was. And also, with my number that I put out there, that is my estimate at $100 a square foot. I, I'm no architect, okay? And on that, I mean, you're gonna be in the ballpark of at least $350,000.
Sure. So, you either handle it.
I realize I'm in dinosaur age. This came, which brings up about the 80s. My son and Chris Stansbury built, please correct me if I'm wrong, one or two trailers in that ag barn for the school. They were the premier welders. And I don't know that my son had any asthmatic deals. And we welded for three days in my shop out there at the ranch. And I know this ADA is the big play. And I don't want anybody to have any problems or any of this, but we opened doors, turned on the heater, and we worked for six hours. We had clothes on like we've got right here. And we're in an economic situation. What was it, $30 a barrel? Gas has went the, anyway, south. We've got to be in the survival mood to survive this deal. And this school has to be in the survival mood to carry on. And I want the best for all these, but everybody's got to gear up to be in the best. We've gotta get in the big hole and run hard. I mean, I realize I'm old, but-
I'm getting old.
This is the way you had to do it. Get up and get it. I hurt every day when I go to work. We gotta get up and get it. I'm sorry, but there's this stuff here that in, in here, two or three years ago, when we had $100 a barrel oil and $3 or $4 gas. And we have got to adjust, because as us as taxpayers, that's what we're looking at, because we're in it for the long haul. I wanna see the school stay here, but let's get up and get in the hunt. We had a great football team, we had a great basketball team, we was all proud of our ag system. Let's get up and get in the hunt. It'll take brand-new trailers, it'll take brand-new this or that and the other. Just get up and get in the hunt. We go there, everybody puts out, and get up and get it. But I'm old. I realize it's a new generation.
Well, I, I mean, that's, that's kinda where I'm at. I want, I want a lot of things, but I also want us to, I want it, you know, we need to be conscious about what we're spending, and have the right things. That's kinda why, that's what we wanted to do here tonight, was get everybody's opinion, because we are gonna have to do something. Not go overboard, but yet spend something, you know, get our facility in shape where it's, we're not just patching a problem, and you patch this, and, well, that'll be good for a couple of years, well, now, next this is patched, because that's what's been done for a long time. And I'm part of that, and other board members are part of that, people before us is part of that, because they had to do it that way. And I think right now, we're, we're at a point where we're ca, we're gonna be capable to do some stuff, but it's gonna take this right here, arguing and figuring out what we got. Randy?
I got, I got a couple of things. One, I'd like to know if you guys have had a chance to actually look at this list, and amongst yourselves, come up with a plan in order to, what's your top priorities on, on this? And then I'd like to hear from some of these people that don't say anything. I'd like to hear some of their thoughts, and be honest about, what do you really wanna do?
This is the worst I've seen this tonight.
Because I think that, I'm not from here, but this community needs this school, and they need the people, and the amount of money that we're talking about on our taxes is minuscule.
I wasn't meaning to surprise anybody with that. It was just something that I've been writing down and getting, you know?
We should be looking at this for the long term, because, you know, if you let it go, and it starts coming apart, it takes a lot more to fix it. I'll tell you that.
Well, and that's why a lot of, I mean, we're not the only school that's gonna have to go to asking the public, the community, for bonds in order to get through the crush that we're gonna go through. And this is our first step. I'm like, we took the first step back in November, asking, you know, at that point in time when Plan A went south. So, now we're here asking you guys, what do you want? And I'm hearing from different things from different people that I had heard at other points in time, whenever we were asking.
That's what we want. We wanna see if you guys, you guys should be unified on what this here plan is, and what you really want.
And that's what we're doing. We're getting your ideas, we're gonna take it back, because there's no way we can come up with a priority list tonight. We're gonna have to go and hash it out.
He said, you guys have been working, not all of you, but you've been working on it for over a year. You should have a good solid plan, and it's been a year. It shouldn't take a year to do that. But I wanna hear more of what the other individuals have to say. What do you really think the priority should be? You know, for you, for, what do you think the priority should be? Shane, I know the roof, the roof's gotta be fixed.
Well, it's, it should be fixed. I mean, for me, my child, the basketball courts, a big one. The ag barns, a big one. I mean, in my family, both projects are top priority.
There's nobody here that should-
There's no give or take on those two issues for me.
There's nobody here should disagree that ag barn needs to be fixed, because that's big in the community.
Right.
And you don't get that on that point.
And it doesn't serve this one child. It serves multiple children in different facets, from the welding, to the public speaking, to all facets, facets of life that they can grow from. But yet, also on that basketball court, they gotta learn how to play as a team. They gotta go out, they gotta learn how to take defeat, win generously. I mean, it's all over. And so, that's why to me, I don't wanna give it up. But, you know, like I say, I'll pull back what I, what we can get done, and then, like I say, in a couple of years, if we can come back and do a few more things, then we do a few more things. But yes, roof's our top priority, because I don't, we don't need ceiling tiles, lights, or speakers falling in on our kids or opponents, you know, anywhere. Whether it be out in the ag barn, in the gym, or in the library, or wherever links are at.
True. I agree.
So, I'm gonna- He's talking to you.
You're new enough, Shane. I'd like to hear from some of the, because I know you have been involved very much, I understand that, but I'd like to hear from some of the others. And I'd also like to hear, I hear a lot, but spring is coming, it's gonna be raining. What are we doing, and what steps have we taken, so that the stuff inside the school is not gonna be damaged, hit the dustling?
Bought a couple of squeegees.
I feel what we need to do. Fix the roof first and foremost. I feel, you know, Sue asked a question earlier, how are we gonna afford to do the whole roof? Well, I think if we tone down the way that we're gonna do the gym roof, that keeps us from having to go ADA compliant on everything at this time. I think it needs to be done. But, you know, there's no doubt, ag, gym, everything, we need all that, but also to be able to participate in any of those activities, you have to be eligible. So, we need classrooms as well. We need, we need to be able to cover the entire school with a structure that doesn't put us at risk to have to fix everything else to be ADA compliant, if we ain't got the money. What I might see done with the, the ag building, the current ag building, is the roof fixed, maybe put a garage door on the west side, use it for a bus barn. Forget about everything else in it for right now. Put up a red iron barn back here, whatever somebody suggests behind the school where the quantities aren't out. Put an ag classroom with a, with a shop, because in the future, I mean, there's, that's the ag farm, and rather than tracing across everything to get there, you're right there, everything's kinda consolidated. With that being said, also, your school is connected, every part of it, classroom-wise, and you can put a, it would be secure then. You secure this building, people's asked, well, how are you gonna secure the ag building? I mean, it is a, a good question. You got two different buildings, you're trying to secure the whole thing, you can sum it up by connecting it to the new building. So, and, and I guess the roof, windows, heat and air, gym floor, fix the roof out there. We can't forget about the things that we do have and let them go. You know, we, we have buses, Suburbans, things like that, we gotta protect too. We're gonna be in the same situation in a few years, so why not fix a building for them? That's what I would do with that one, I'd build a new ag barn back there, if you could. I don't know what all we can do with the money we got, but that's, that's what I would do. That's, that'd be my priority list for now. And a storm cellar, of course.
Me?
Sure.
Well, since everyone else is gonna be joining on the wish list, I have one that's graduating this year, so for him, he's finished. I do have one that still has a few years, and the dream is to have a, a school where you're gonna be safe at every day, whether it's due to the roof, whether it's due to the gym, whether it's due to the classroom structures. Everything is all about the focus of the kids, and I think a lot of times, we lose sight of that. It's not about my neighbor to the left, my neighbor to the right, it's about my child. And the reason we moved back was for my child to have the best education, and that was always my dream, to come back. And I came back. However, I did not anticipate the condition. Had that ever been a factor to us, we may have reconsidered. But we love this school, we love the community. This is where we've always dreamed of our kids finishing their schooling. It has been a goal, we met it. Unfortunately, the condition of our school is at the point of critical, if you wanna look at it from that perspective. Whether we agree or disagree on the priorities, we do have to keep that in mind, is the children, if they don't have the safe structure, then what is it gonna, what's it gonna do to them? Where are they gonna continue to have their education? So, it's a shame that we didn't get the votes that we needed for the last bond, due to the rumors and to the hearsays, and instead of having the right information given at the right time, yes, that was a lack of oversight on our parts, and we take that for granted, of course. But now's the time to say, okay, here's our priority list. One is the roof. We've got to have that, we've got to fix it. Second would be the gymnasium. It serves different purposes for different things throughout the year, for the community and our children. So, it's a priority factor as well. The other would be the ag facility. It has grown since I have been here. We did not participate in FFA. I didn't even know what that all was about. However, now, it's a big part of my life, unfortunately, if you wanna look at it. I found smelling certain smells I never envisioned, and I thank my daughter for that. She's learning leadership, she's learning the speech part of it, she's competitive, she loves her animals, I don't know why. And then I have a welder. So, you look at all those factors of what they're learning here in this environment, I think I am thankful every day for the teachers that provide that environment. However, they're limited because of what we're being selfish, not giving them. So, whether it's $100 that we give at the end of the year, so be it. We spend $100 selfishly on pop, or going out to eat, or going and find a pair of shoes that cost more than what would have cost us to repair the school for our children, for their future. So, whether we competitively all come together, is that it's the school first, the classrooms, the roof, the gym, whether it's a safe entrance for keeping this school secure, those are all things that we- It's about the safety and keeping this school intact for our kids to continue and the future generations that come in. And we hope to have come in. Because if we don't do it now, we're gonna lose out in what our legislators proposing, consolidation, shortcuts, budget cuts, teacher shortages. We have to be more competitive now than ever. So as far as my thoughts, that's, that's it. It's not about what I promised here and what I promised there. It's about coming together and making that list the best it can be for our kids. That's it. Flynn?
My speech won't be that long. I've been pretty big on the windows, the roof. Kinda like Shane, the cellar back here, I don't want my kids in there for tornado comes. I want a safe room built somewhere. We talked about maybe a weight room, we could build up a safe room there. Heat and air, gyms, whatever. I don't see that we need all the seats. Floor we need, roof.
So, this is what I'd like to see you, you guys up there do.
All the room, we gotta stop.
You can't get all this stuff done in a year, you know? There's a lot of stuff on that list that needs to be done. So I'd like to see you guys put, put the plan together that's not gonna take one year to do, that's gonna take more than one year. Don't worry about what, you have to look, don't worry about what the price of it is and then come back and talk to us when you guys get ready to back your plan, visit with the community. Because it should be more than what you asked for the last time. Because everything that needs to be done, actually needs to be done. And if you just do part of it, you're gonna come back a little bit later and you're gonna have a big gap and it's gonna get a lot worse. Because you're gonna have to do this in phases to get it all done anyway. So why not come back with a good solid plan that's gonna take a couple, two to two years or three years, because we're gonna be paying for it for a while anyway? And work on those things every year and get everything done and at the end of that time, look back and see what you guys have created. There's no reason, you can't use the existing ag building that you need to add a little bit to spruce up the outside for the people that thinks it's an eyesore, people that don't like it or want somebody to say, wow, look at this place, look how it's changed since I've been here. That's what we need to do. Uh, one of the themes that really got me when I first came, and actually before I came down here, I met people that graduated out of school and then graduated college and came back to this community and went to other places. So I've met a lot of people that aren't even living here now, that graduated from this school, graduated from college and are very successful in doing different things. Some of them come back, some of them happy. That's something to talk about. And you don't wanna let that, let that go for the kids that are coming up now. Look how many kids went to college out, I know they're small classes, but look how many kids went to college out of this last group that graduated. You know, that's something to talk about. And we should be proud of that. You guys should be proud of that. It's your kids going to places, so. And everybody in here that have kids in this school.
As far as the bond that didn't pass, that, that whole bond is nothing to throw away. I mean, it was a whisker from being, uh, good to everybody, you know? It was that close. That's why I think basically have the structure, it might just mean a little bit. And one of the things that I thought, when we first started talking about that, was I always thought that basically kinda what you had there, but maybe in three phases with your stuff that absolutely has to be done, taking care of it first and foremost. And getting that done in a year and then go to phase two, maybe you save some money in phase one, you know? But basically, not do the whole ball of wax all at once, but have a plan to do the whole ball of wax. Say in, in a few years, do phase one and phase two, then maybe phase three. And, uh, phase one being the, the stuff that just absolutely has to be done. You know, you're talking about the heater, the, you know, getting the water from running inside stopped and maybe just a little tweak like that would get it over the hump.
Well, I think there's a lot of people, some of them quite confused about how public funding works. And that is, I, I know sitting and listening to the board meetings and the conversations that went on, the board was very conscious about trying to put together a package that was, was very cost effective for the taxpayers. They, they were really worried about where the billis levy would come in. They, they didn't want the tax to be a burden on the community. And the initial bond package, uh, and the initial want list was, was pared way down to the point that it was proposed, and remember that, the discussion was always worst case scenario. And it was based upon a district net assessed valuation of eighteen million dollars. And the actual net assessed valuation of the district was twenty-three million dollars. So there was a twenty percent wiggle room in there. It, it was actually proposed at nine mil, nine, uh, nine mils and the valuation was actually twenty percent higher than where it was figured. So, I, I know the board by sitting and listening to the discussion was very conscious of that, but i, if you looked on things that were included, like the gymnasium, there, there was things on the list like retractable goals and, uh, the seating and things like that. When you look at a bond proposal, there's, there's only two things, or three, that's included in that bond proposal for that gym. A roof, a gym floor, and it's gotta be handicapped, I mean, it's gotta be brought up to ADA compliance because that's the law. When you change the roof line and roof structure. All the other things in there are a, a want list, a wish list. Because you have a budget on that project, on that gymnasium. The budget is, on the sheet that they work off of, the budget was, uh, eight hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred dollars. And if the bid comes in on that gym at eighteen thousand, I mean, eight hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred dollars, then all the things like the seating and the fan for air circulation and the new air conditioning for the gym, all that goes out the window. You, you're not doing any of that. And then there was some talk about, well, the school has a, uh, has grown the carryover in the building fund. Well, that's true because immediately when the board started talking about proposing a bond issue, we started to be, started trying to build that building fund as soon as we could. So when we got to that point and those construction budgets started coming back, then the building fund would have more money in it, so the board would have an option during that construction time. They would have options. Well, uh, when the bond issue was proposed, if it would've passed, and you're talking about having future and doing it in phases, if it would've passed with our net assessed valuation, we could've gotten into a scenario where after it had been out and been paid on for two to three years, then the board would then move into the next phase because they still had their want list and then went and proposed to the taxpayers, now we need to move on to our next phase and this is our next priority on our want list. And we wanna propose this bond issue and because we've made two to three years' payments on this, we wanna pass this bond issue and it's not gonna raise your taxes any at all. Our billis levy is gonna stay, stay, stay exactly the same. You're gonna stay at the current nine mils levy. And two to three years after that, then we move on to our next priority and the school needs this up.
Yeah, I was basically just trying to give that as an example, that something in the, in the past bond that could be changed. Because like I said, it was, it was very close. I mean, it, it doesn't take much to get that bond over the hump if there's, if there's a necessary change in there that could be made, that would, uh, basically make it a new bond.
So if you added a whole number of, to that bond originally, you would've passed it?
But like I say, to, to, uh, to get the number of votes you need, there's, there's not a lot wrong with it.
I know, but on this bond that we didn't pass, it was just portions of the roof. So if we were to see, keep the model the same and add all the roof structure, you would be okay with that? You would say yes?
I'm, yeah, I'm not, uh, I'm not, you know, remembering for sure what all was on the old bond, but yeah, I would, I would say, like I was saying, your number one priority, stop water from running inside the building, anywhere on the school, the whole roof, you know? That would be number one.
And just to, to also, Mr. McQuiston, if he would clarify, once we start construction, we have to become ADA compliant. That is not our decision.
If you change the roof line.
Right. If we were to touch it. So be that in mind, it's not.
Not touch.
It's not us on some of these issues saying, we choose to do this or choose to do that. It's the law. Once it becomes a whole new thing in itself, it's outside of our hands. So that's another thing that, you know, if it's in there, it's for a reason.
Are you all still proposing the peak roof on the gym if we go to the next bond?
That's my, my.
Pardon?
That is my, my, that's my request.
How do you know the school is actually sturdy enough to hold that? If we got.
If we got.
The big snowfalls and it slides over on this part of the school.
We'll have to look at everything, that's why we have an architect, that we.
Would you encourage or even consider having the architect come to Freedom or a general assembly meeting before you run a bond issue?
I would. Dennis?
If you put membranes on the roof, do you have to become ADA compliant?
No, my understanding of it is, oh, go ahead. Oh, my understanding of it is, if you don't change roof line, you don't add new, more or less.
Structure.
Structure to your building, no you do not. But, that being said.
We'd, we'd check with the architect.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's my understanding. But I still think that at least these two bathrooms right here in this hallway, we need to do that now. That way, coming down the line, if in two years or a year, they, the state comes in and says, hey, you, you gotta do this, you, we're already, we've already got that started. You know, it, it prolongs that out further with the, the next time we want to do something and, okay, next time, we're gonna do the, the kitchen ones, we're gonna do the ones in the hallway, we're gonna do the ones in the locker room, whatever that be. I don't know if it'll work that way, but that is, I think that's the way it ought to be done, but.
Well, and the membrane roof is quite a bit cheaper than the TPO.
Well, TPO and, and the membrane are, are the same thing.
Okay, well, I'm talking about a.
Yes.
Building structure.
Uh, the, uh, a new slope roof with insulation, uh, will run you about eleven dollars a square foot and the.
They were anywhere from four to six dollars.
Yeah, and the, and the TPO with, with the, with the two inch batting on it, like Chain said, runs from four to six dollars.
Around half.
Yeah.
And you don't have to come ADA compliant on everything.
Yeah, that, I'm, I'm pretty confident in that, I'm pretty sure that's what he said, but I mean, that'd be.
So that would still leave it a flat roof?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
And the.
Cause I can't, I can't even count the number of times.
And the membrane, the membrane roof has a life of just twenty years. Twenty years' life.
I can tell you on.
Roof many times.
Uh, yeah, they're, they're gonna have just a little bit more than that, but, you know, sheet metal's sheet metal.
It leaks too.
Yeah.
And there's a lot, I mean, there are a lot of schools that are going over top of their sheet metal with that new membrane stuff now.
Yeah, that was, I mean, I hate to interject, but you mean, that was, that was my personal opinion for the sheet metal is, and, hey, previously at public schools where I, where I worked, where I came here, that's what I did with slope sheet metal roofs. At their end of life, I put the membrane roof over the top of slope sheet metal roof, it works great. And that's why I'm a proponent of initially putting on a slope sheet metal roof because suddenly you've got a slope roof that you can get over fifty years' life out of. And rather than, because, well, I mean, basically, you can get right at sixty years of life out of a structure and, and you can put a membrane over membrane. So, you know, once you've got the structure there, you can apply membrane, then membrane, membrane. So you're, you're looking at getting twenty-five to thirty years' life out of the sheet metal and then apply the membrane over the sheet metal. There's another twenty, then another twenty, and another twenty. But, that didn't work that way, so.
What's mandatory on the roof?
What's that?
What's mandatory on your roof?
What's mandatory?
What's mandatory?
What do you mean by mandatory?
The, I, in my opinion, this whole roof needs covered. This whole, all these buildings need fixed. They're, they're, we're, they've got the coating on them that we put on seven years ago, it's about run past its life. Uh, well, it is past it. I think that stuff's only supposed to go five, you're supposed to do it every five years, something like that.
Now, that's, that's the barrels.
Yeah, the barrels, you know? And we were having leaks before we put that on there, that stuff has held up really well. Uh, but we're to the point that the library's leaking, the ITM room's leaking, when you walk in the front door and it's leaking, when you walk in the front door, there's trash can right there about where that peak is when you come in. The gym is pouring, you know?
So you put a slope on everything to drain the water off and then shed it up?
It would be nice to do that, but I don't know if you could justify the cost of that, that, you know?
Can you not do that with membrane?
That's actually a misconception of, when they say you're gonna repair the flat roof with membrane, there are some companies that just cover it, there are some that come in with foam and build it up to where it's sloped, to where the water will run off, like it's not such a severe peak, but it, they, they fill it with foam. And, uh, I don't know what else they do, but they, they create a, a slope to where the water will run off. And some do, some don't.
And also, I'm sorry, go ahead. And like, what Shane's talking about, like the barrels, the barrel part of the school, is, is a perfect application of, like a TPO, like the membrane, because it's got the slope to it. So, I mean, that would be a perfect place to put membrane roof, because the water won't stand on it, it won't degrade.
And like our gym roof now has a, a drain in the center of it that's plugged. So, you know, a lot of people don't know that. When, when the water sits there, there's pools up there and it gets two foot deep in places because that drain's plugged. Uh, that'd be the first thing I'd do is try to fix the drain. And it looks pretty simple, but, and if you had the drain fixed, then you're, I mean, you have an architect or engineer.
Five drains up there, they're all five in high spots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Roof saddles probably went up the drain. Roof saddles probably went between them, so I don't settle three feet.
Where are we in line for a maintenance man? Personnel.
We're looking, that's gotta be for future discussions, that's going to happen, that's simple.
Who was responsible for the boiler? Who was responsible for the boiler?
Who was responsible, or he again?
The one we just got.
Keep water in it.
Who's responsible for the boiler?
It keeps water on, in it? It's got a valve.
It was a valve?
It's got a valve, and it's tied into city water. It's got a, a bypass valve.
There was a bypass valve on it that was leaking and letting it, letting it go out. My understanding of it was what was on it, that's what happened.
It had a, it had a bypass valve that went out.
Right.
So the valve, bypass valve vac, valve function?
Yeah, yes.
It's too bad we couldn't clone Gemini.
That would be really nice.
Cameron Hensley. We have not had one. Personnel.
Right, hey, I, I'm in agreeance with that, guys, but that's, I mean, we really, we can't, that's a subject for another, we, we, you know, I'm all about entertaining that, but not right now.
Shane, how long, if you put something together again, how long are you looking at where it would come to the voters on the bond, so that we can start work on the roof and not be having a lot of delays?
I was looking at that today, and I can't remember what, if we were to set a, what am I wanting to say here? If we were to set a resolution tonight for him to get everything together, I think the next time we could vote on that is in like July, that, that would be the closest, cause you got to have, from the time you set the resolution, and then say if we had, had the resolution set, and we had it at our next board meeting where we had all the information and everything to go, if you did that at the March, the...
March fourteenth.
Fourteenth, seventeenth? If we did it March the seventeenth, where we said, this is the bond we're running, you have to, it's a minimum of sixty days before you can vote.
And then you gotta have a special election.
And then it's a special election, that's right. So it would be June, July, before we could vote on it. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to hash it out now, cause I, it's that critical, we get this roof on this building. I don't wanna wait.
After June or July, how long before the roof would get set in place and finished?
Ooh, it would be however long it would take for us to get the bids and select the contract, I mean, you're, it's, it's dragging on out. I don't, I couldn't give you an exact time, but it's, it would probably be Christmas next or maybe, yeah. But then again, there's a lot of stuff slowing down now, there'd probably be a lot of construction companies ready to get to work, you know? But I don't know, you know? I would say it'd be at least, probably November or better before they get started on it, maybe sooner, I don't know.
So what would stop from giving bids now for fixing, fixing the roof?
What's that?
What would stop you from getting the bids now from fixing your roof?
Getting the bids?
Yeah, getting bids now from fixing.
We have to get our money first.
Yeah.
Well, if you do, if you, if you have some bids, you know how much money we actually need, that's what we can...
Uh, there's other considerations. You have to go to the legal process if you run it on bond issue.
That's another reason I think the membrane's a better idea for now, is if they can do that while we're in school, it won't affect a thing. They're gonna come in and do major renovation, nothing like that, and once again, that way we could possibly cover the entire school, after getting in there and not have to worry about bathrooms and everything else at this time.
Well, it hasn't when we left, I like to call it.
Sometimes afterwards you can't get the bid.
You can't get bids before you have a bond?
You can at least get an estimate, can't you?
Yes, we'll have an estimate, a cost estimate on all components, uh, before we, before the board calls for a bond election.
All right, thank you, Sid.
They, they would have to do that, but otherwise they wouldn't know how large of a bond election to call for.
And would you wanna clarify, Shane, that there are several things on your list here that are not things you would include in that bond issue?
Oh, yeah, there's, I, those are just things I wrote down that over the last, I've went, I've got the stack of papers in my office that I've kept for school stuff, and I've been going back.
Well, several of these are pretty small.
Oh, yeah.
And I think we all need to understand that we're not going to go to bond issue to fix the ventilation in the science lab.
Yeah, probably, no, I would say no, that was just something that was on, that I had thought about, and that had been mentioned to me before, and, you know, that's something that I think we could probably fix in-house at some point, you know, when we get somebody...
I would think you could have building fund or capital outlay that would cover those small expenses.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely, that was just a...
And so then, my next question is, cause I'm full of questions, as you know, um...
All the time.
Do we have a, a progress plan on these things? I mean, uh, why, why do you need to fix the drains in the science lab? Why haven't those been maintained all the way through?
Hey, that's a...
Uh, why is that ventilation a problem? Why isn't that fixed as needed?
Yeah, it's, uh, just some things that haven't been taken care of, and we haven't handled it very well. And we're trying to get on that, to get on that, it's just something that, you know, I probably shouldn't have put all that down on there, it was just on my brain when I was writing it down, and it's, it's a kick in the butt for me to remind people, hey, we get next, how come we didn't, we, we haven't done this yet, we haven't checked on this, you know? Cause we, cause everything is going on like that. What's that?
You don't have a maintenance person since Audi and, and Jim.
I know, and that's, once again, I, I would love to talk about that, but we can't, it just means...
Shane?
Yes?
Or Mr. McQuiston, what would be an estimate, a ballpark estimate to coat the roofs? How big of a dollar is that?
I don't have square footage off the top of my head, I, I, all of them. Uh, just what we was looking at on the initial, I've got the, that square footage. I'm, I'm, I can get pretty close, uh, I sure can.
I think it was somewhere around four hundred and fifty, something like that, wasn't it?
Five fifteen.
Five fifteen for all of them.
If you're looking at a TPO...
But that was...
Yeah, it was more than that, that's not included, that other one. Uh, it's gonna be probably ballpark of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand, but that's not, that's not counting, that's just for materials, that's not counting the HVAC, uh, people, or the electric, uh, the electricians, or the plumbers, cause you'll have to have HVAC, electrical, and plumbing when you do that, so that'll be added cost.
For the roof?
Yes. Yes, you'll have to have HVAC, electrical, plumbing, when you do that.
They're gonna have to move some stuff up there, whatever it is they do.
Well, supposedly if you could find the right group, that would be a, a company that would guarantee what they do.
Well, it'll, all, all that work.
Not a fly-by-night, which there'll be several goes show up and try to bid. This is something we need now. We can't wait another year and have more deterioration than the ceilings. The roof recoating is the number one priority, and getting that new gym floor, you can't put a floor in till you get the roof fixed.
Yeah, the coating on the barrels, when, I, I guess, seven or eight years ago, there was storm damage, and the district...
You came here and you discovered it, tried to turn it in on the insurance, and a prior superintendent down the road, quite a few years ago, had already collected.
Yeah, and they put a, just put a, well, whatever the type of roof that is on the gym, and at that time, they put a spray application on the barrels, and that spray application has a, about a seven-year useful life. And we've got, like Mr. Moore said, where there's a seam right inside the front entry, you've got that, and there's another one right down that primary hallway, and where it joins the concrete T building, the gym, there's one started there, and that's the two links.
On this side.
Right over here on this side, that's actually on the TPO building, on the library. There are...
The new...
And see, that building's twenty years old, and it's, that roof said it's in the life.
The last bond issue that passed from the computer lab, that's the last bond issue that's passed here.
Yeah.
And Pioneer helped push that.
Well...
To get that ITV system into our school.
Yeah, well, that roof is a TPO roof, it's just over twenty years old, it said it's in the life, it's got, uh, issues, it's, I mean, it's something that's gonna have to be taken care of. So, but this problem in this hallway is actually that TPO roof. So, but, with that being said, within the last year, we've had two places on the barrels where they applied that spray, that it's starting to show up. And, you know, I don't know how many problems the school had before they applied that spray, talking with individuals, they said that there were issues, but, you know, it's coming back, and it's just, it's not gonna get better. Roof leaks don't get better, or they never have in the homes I've lived in. So I don't expect it to get better as they go along here either, but... For some reason, I was thinking, off, in, in my head, there was about a little over thirty-six thousand square feet under roof, but that's not including the, uh, old gym, so, uh, that's what I was going off. But all the electrical will have to be taken up and moved, all the plumbing on top, which is natural gas, would have to be taken up and moved. HVAC will have to be temporarily taken up and moved, so that'll be an extra cost if you, when you apply a membrane.
So I might correct, the structure on top of the school, that you had look of metal here to do two or three weeks ago, that apparatus at the front part of the school, it's silver and aluminum, that is a heater, air conditioning combination.
Correct.
Because for those of us that went to school here when this was built, the boiler was in the janitor's room, back in the corner.
Yes.
It's still in there, and we still use the boiler, I mean...
It's still there?
Yeah, yeah, we still use the boiler for heat.
That's...
It's still used at that, there's just other units up there for add-ons to the building, or air conditioning.
We didn't have air conditioning.
Is that what he's talking about, for the front office?
Yeah.
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 From sixth grade when this was built. And that was a lot of money back then, that our parents stuck their necks out to build this new school.
Well, I'm just reading our last bond issue, and, you know, if you, if you don't do the peak roof, and, you know, that, that estimated cost of the retractable goals and the modern lighting and the fan and the HVAC new stuff in there is, that's six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars what they estimated that was gonna cost, the inside of the gym, that's, that did not include the floor though, did it?
Yes, part of that was the front door, one was, but yes, it was given as a cost.
And the floor is about ninety thousand, somewhere around there?
Oh.
That's what it was when we talked about it.
There were extra goals in that gym.
There still are.
There are. They could crank those down.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm looking at what we, what we discussed before, and if you put the membrane roof on there, and don't do the slope roof, but you, it, I mean, do the TPO or the Nerlax or whatever we use there, you're gonna get pretty close, and I still think you fix the roof, and we could do something with the water stains on the inside, and put a new gym floor in that, and then fix every roof on this building for around, or less, pretty close, around the same price of what we were just gonna spend on it. I'd say that'd be something we're gonna do. Cause I, I mean, that's the one thing that, cause I'm for that gym being nice, and being one of the best ones around, but, I'm also for the roofs not falling down the rest of the school first. And I do think that for right now, like our ag facility out there, repairing that, you know, I, I think that at this point, maybe that's still the right thing to do, and we may not go as far on it, but, for now, you fix the roof, you get some of the wiring in there repaired, make sure the doors and everything are good, and then, five years down the road, that does turn into a bus bar, and we build them in our facility out here. Cause I'm intending on this place being here for a long time, long after I'm here, and...
Is that a membrane? You can membrane that roof, and they'll guarantee it for, what, twenty K?
Yeah, there's something on, I've, they're anywhere from, the bids that we got when they bid it for us here, bid the gym, was anywhere from fifteen to twenty years on it.
Yeah.
That's what they're guaranteeing. Certain roofs have different guarantees, some won't guarantee for hail, but some will, and some of them you have to have a, every year or ten-year inspection, something like that, and they gotta come inspect it to make, which is, you know, something that is on us to make sure that that gets done, and...
Is that on them?
Is that on what? We have to make sure that they come inspect it, cause if you forget and they don't, they'll be like any other company like that, oh.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, and that's gonna be on us when that hap, when, whatever way we go, we're gonna have to, I don't know if anybody else has dealt with warranties of any kind, you have to fight for every bit of them. They don't just give them to you, they say they're warranted, but you're still gonna have to fight for them.
Well, it's your decision as a board to come up with the recommendation, and I hope all of you consider this carefully, that we don't need to prolong it any longer than we need to. We need, I would guess, like Dennis said, what's wrong with that type of roof that he's mentioned, Shannon has mentioned? Twenty years, you say, maybe? None of us are gonna be here, uh, unless we have a big influx, flow of kids here at this school, we're not gonna have a high school twenty years from now. You know, our numbers are small in the high school.
That's the...
Would you three, Mr. McQuiston? I mean, that is one thing Miss, the State School Superintendent is looking at, I mean, we got money.
Senate Education Committee refused to hear any consolidation bills as of now.
Yeah, right. See, we were at this point one of the...
I don't make those types of decisions.
Now, we survive and we gain students, but that was twenty years ago. Now, we survive and we gain students, but that was 20 years.
Well, I'm certainly not gonna look at it as, well, let's just get it another 10 years because we won't have a high school anyway, cause that's not the way I'm looking at this.
No.
Not at all. And I refuse to look at it like that. And anybody that does, there's a door. Uh, you know, that's the way I feel about that. This place is going to be here, one way or another. Because if it takes fighting and scratching to get something done, I'm willing to do that. And, you know, I, I've heard that about all I'm gonna hear from anybody. You know, I, I don't mean to jump anybody's butt, but I, the, the talk of that, well, we're not gonna have high school in 20 years, maybe? I don't, no, that's not even an option. I'm not even looking at that.
Really? That's like 25 years ago when I got on the school board.
Yeah, same thing. It gets old.
You're not gonna have this high school to graduate your kids out of. Well, I had two already out.
Yeah, yeah.
Always gonna be gone in five years. And I said, well, that's yet to be decided.
Exactly. There's been a lot of people that would like our school to be gone.
Oh, absolutely. I agree with that 100%.
You fought for it.
Yep.
You fought for it.
And this is another one of those times where we're fighting for it. And I, you know, just cause there's a disagreement there, doesn't mean it's not all wanting to get to the right thoughts. Yes, sir, Brett.
As a, just a community member, I mean, you want to be, I want to be able to feel like we have an effective board that can put a good plan together where I don't have to get into all the peripheral things. I wanna be able to put my faith and trust in the board to put together a good bond proposal. And I don't wanna have to debate whether I should support it.
Right.
So, does the board have a feel? The first bond issue failed to attain a supermajority by its light volume. Does the board have a feel for, or does the community have a feel for why that was the case? Is it because people felt there was too many extras in the first bond? There was a lack of communication about what was in the bond? Or are there just enough people that are unwilling to consider any increase in the property tax?
You're always gonna have that. I think you're always gonna have that few that are, they're not gonna vote yes for property tax regardless, but the first two, I think, were the problems. Uh, you know, there was, there was not good communication anywhere. So, you know, we argued about it, but then we go on our separate ways and never talk about it anymore. And then when we did have a meeting about it, it was two weeks or three weeks before the, the election and there wasn't communication there. And for me, the people that were coming in and, and calling me and talking to me and asking me about the bond, their first deal was, gee, Merry Christmas. You know, they're spending that much on the gym, why don't they fix some of the other, the roof leaks? It wasn't about the dollar figure. If the 1.3, the people that I was talking to, it wasn't about their tax rate being raised. It was about spending it, felt like we were spending it all in one spot and not fixing everything. That's, that's what I got. That's what I took from the community. And, cause I don't think there's much wrong with, with, with what we got going on, other than, you know, the, the roofs to me are just a huge deal. Nah, it's just a big deal. We gotta fix all of them. We can't wait.
You gotta get it out there in the public too, that you're going to have a bond this election. That's what it's for. Cause two weeks before, everybody says, you need to go vote. And I says, why don't we vote now?
That's what, I mean, and that's, hey, that's, you know, anything that's ever been worthwhile, I've ever done, or probably most of us have ever done, that we've had to fight for. And this happens to be one of those times, I think. You know, and there's been mistakes made and it's time to get it together and let's go. Let's get this right.
I think we're at an advantage too, right now, because we have freedom call, that people pick up and read. And we have an, a, an option to, to have that in the paper and, and I think people will, will know more about it just because of that.
I'm, I'm 100%. I agree with you on that. Uh, you know, I, I agree with you. You know, it's, I've been on the board a long time and there are some times that I wanna go hide in the hole when people come at me. And I haven't done a very good job of talking to people for probably a year or two, because it's just like, I don't wanna talk about it anymore. But that, that, that time's over. It's time to, to get our butts in gear and let's get this straight, because nobody wants to see this place go, what?
And I, I agree with Rick. Let's just get after it and do it, because, you know, our kids that are going to school here deserve every single bit of beautiful, good things. Beautiful podiums, uh, beautiful floor. I just noticed that I went outside, you know, across the front of the floor, it says freedom. I mean, those are the things we need to give our kids and make them proud to be here and proud to be, uh, have good things and, and.
Proud to wear red and white, as I am.
That's exactly right. Cause we, that's important.
Yeah, it's a big deal. Well, I think that, I mean, looking at our last bond, what was on there? You know, I think we could, I mean, all the roofs need fixed. I think that's first priority. I think the heat and air conditioning and the windows is, well, I'm gonna flip-flop. All the roofs and the gym floor are the first two things that need fixed. After that is the windows, the heat and air system. I think the bathrooms in this hallway, right here, the two main bathrooms, need to be on this. The, well, any fixtures up there now? No, they need to be made ADA compliant, I guess. And that would, that would put us, I mean, that would, that would set us up for a while. And, and then the ag building, uh, whether, and if we called for that or set a resolution to have you do that, can we look at what the cost of repairing this ag facility is versus what the cost of a, what size of building do you say? 40 by 80?
I was, that's 40 by 80.
Everybody think that's big enough?
I just had to sit down and look at the number of students and talk to Mr. Webber.
Yeah.
I was the last.
Well, there's classroom space and shop space.
What about the weight room? Could you make one?
Oh, and, yeah, and maybe put the, uh, weight room, safe room deal on that. And then that way, the architect can get that and shoot us back some price costs by our next, maybe our next board meeting and go from there.
Uh, that's gonna be cut pretty close.
Okay.
That's not safe for sure.
Roof, roof.
membrane.
Yep, membrane type roof. Is anybody opposed to that?
I talked to Mr. Webber.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Roof on the entire facility.
On the entire facility, yes, sir.
ADA and the two hallways.
Yep, yep.
High efficiency windows.
All right.
Do you need the gym floor?
Don't forget, don't do not forget the gym floor. I mean, we do need a gym floor.
What else?
Ag building. Okay.
You want the coffee cup first?
Between upgrade versus building a new building?
Still want membrane that roof?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, I mean, if we do, if we decided to do that, that would be membrane that, then we would be doing windows.
Shane, I have another question.
Shoot.
I, I, I don't remember numbers, but on the bond issue that we voted on, you have that there, would you tell me, there was a category for miscellaneous?
Let me look here.
Very top, very top, very top.
Yeah.
What was that figure?
It was $179,800. And that was including the updating all the public restroom, all the restrooms to make them ADA, replacing the boiler and HDA, and then design and engineering.
Okay, that kinda clarifies that for me. My second question is about the bond issue. I've been told that you don't have a maintenance person employed by the district, so if we spend these millions of dollars on these repairs, are you in the hunt for a maintenance person who can take care of this?
I can say, yes, we are. And that is probably going to get to be a bigger conversation in the future, but.
It's not gonna do any good to fix it if you don't have anybody to take care of it?
Yes, ma'am, I agree with you. I 100% agree with you. So, I, I agree. Are you looking for a job? Weight room, safe room, is there anything else?
What do you have?
Okay, he's got all the roofs, the gym floor, the bathrooms in these two halls, these two bathrooms, the.
High efficiency windows.
High efficiency windows.
Check it out. Upgrade the existing ag and also the cost of new one.
Yeah, yeah, upgrading the two buildings.
Cost of a combination of weight room, safe room.
Yep. Heat and air conditioning, like.
But in the gym also, that needs to do lighting.
What?
Lighting with the gym. It needs the lighting and probably a speaker system.
And what it would cost to clean the water stains and the.
Locker rooms.
You know, the.
Hey, Shane, the lights that can't turn on. Do you have the locker rooms for the, for the gym?
Oh, Shane, you said HVAC?
Yes.
And those locker rooms do need to be cleaned, definitely with that.
This is the boiler.
Yep, boiler, HPC. I mean, that was a project that was on there. And I'm taking a lot, I mean, a lot right off.
Boiler out, HVAC here.
Yes. Not necessarily, I mean, that's what I'm wanting to price, what they're, what they're gonna do there.
All right, I'll see. See how fast he can get this back and see if he can get it to 14.
Right. Do I need to make a motion to do that? To set a resolution?
No, because you're not setting a priorities list yet.
Okay.
Wait till we get prices back.
Wait till we get one of these back.
Yeah, and wait till you get one of these back. Cause that's how he'll break it down.
Right.
And then when you get these prices back, then the board will set the priorities list off of these breakdowns.
Didn't we set the resolution to do that the last time before we, when we got that back and then we made the move to the new board?
No, because see, this has this Boag facility on it. When you set your list, you took that off and you brought out the, this, and I got this as an identity.
Okay, I just, I thought that we set the resolution to get all that together and then after you got all that together.
I think you just asked him to get it shipped.
Okay, okay, well, I just.
He can gather that and then, once he gets that, then you can vote on a resolution based on this. And I'll get this information for you. Is that one deal that the weight room deal he's already done?
Yes.
Yeah, but I don't have it. Yeah, you don't have it there, but he's already done. You don't have it. Which is what changes. Yeah, it's just gonna be concrete walls.
Well, that's just. Okay. Let me see what, what all you got wrote down. Is there anything else?
Just get the bathrooms and the locker.
B bathrooms and locker room too. The locker room.
Make sure the locker room is way back.
Oh.
Well, we don't want that.
That's just for the gym, right?
Yes.
HVAC was what we had, spinning it right here, for the school, right here. I was in the miscellaneous.
Eric, miss me, just need to shut the heater off.
Yep, I think so, yep.
And some of it.
That's what it is.
There's stale.
Stale.
That's what the district's having there.
As much as we can cut out, maybe that's fine.
Cut out for now, cause I'd.
You get this near there, I have something, I have this one. That's a lot of it, yes, sir.
But. Why'd you drive? They were first here.
I'm gonna finish it.